Mr. Manager, if we can get going.
Well, not on the agenda, but I would like to ask Laverre to come to the podium here because we recently received a Public Corporation of the Year Award from the Carolinas Virginia Minority Supplier Development Council as a result of their most recent convention that they had at the Convention Center. And we received this award, and you saw it in the City Managers' update this weekend. And so, I'd just like to ask Laverre to make a comment and then present the mayor with this award.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. This award was presented to the City of Virginia Beach on behalf of the Economic Development Department and Finance Purchasing for our participation in increasing minority business with the City of Virginia Beach. And so, we accepted this award last Monday, August the 5th, and we had the pleasure of having the mayor there who provided the welcome, and Councilman Routs who spoke at the event. And I don't know if you want to say a few words about the event?
Yeah, I just want to say, take my hat off to you and Taylor Adams and the whole Economic Finance Team. And what you guys did, a great job of hosting the event. I mean, we had over hundreds of small and minority-owned businesses from the Carolinas and all we have here to Virginia. And the event went way flawless. The golf outing was very, very nice as well. And this is the first year we've seen the beach has won this award. And the last time they held this event was four years ago.
Correct.
And they held it here, so it's, all of us should take our hats off. Very proud of you all. Thank you again.
Thank you. And so, I'd like to present this to you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you all for your support in our minority business program.
Erin, come on up here and take this. Let's accept this on behalf of our council and a great staff that works together. The Minority Business Council is a great group that we have been working with for, you know, years now. And this is a team effort, and we are the city of yes, and we're the city of inclusion and change.
Well said, Mayor.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you allowing us to join you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everybody's hard work on that. And yes, it was a very nice convention. And council members and mayor, thank you very much for being a part of that. So, we're gonna ask one more indulgence today with regards to our agenda. We have some folks that need to rush off to attend a joint land use public meeting at the Sandler Center today. And so, what I'd like to do is just, we're gonna begin with the school funding formula, which is your first agenda item. And then, we're gonna follow up with the dredging and beach replenishment update so that the engineers that are associated with that and Tom Leahy's leadership team can get on downrange where they need to be for that meeting too. If that's okay with you, Mayor?
Right ahead. Thank you.
All right. So, let me begin. So, you've had your Friday packet information regarding our school funding formula. This is an information briefing, and I've asked our Director of Management Services and Budget, David Bradley, to present this. Thank you. David?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. We're just starting fiscal year '20, and we're already starting to talk about fiscal year '21. But this is an issue that will impact fiscal year '21. So, maybe more for the citizens watching at home. I just wanted to just briefly do a slide about the relationship of the school board and city council, because I think it is important to know. And I'm not gonna read all this, but the bottom line is, the school board does not have taxing authority. Only the city council has taxing authority. And when the city council appropriates money to the school board, they can do it one of two ways. One is lump sum. In other words, here is the pool of cash, and they give it, we give it to schools. And that's the way we're currently doing it. And another way is to do it by categories, and we've done it like that as well. But these categories are very broad: transportation, instruction, administration. City council cannot dictate to the schools their policies or priorities. That is the sole responsibility of the school board and the state of Virginia. And at the end of the year, any money that's left over in the school operating fund, local money, has to revert back to the general fund. That reversion money, as we call it, is held in fund balance, and city council may appropriate it the following year, which our city council generally has done. So, I think it's just good to kind of understand that. Just talking about the history of funding formulas in Virginia Beach. We started in the mid, late 1990s. We did a survey of seven of the cities above 100,000 in our state. And I don't know if we were one of the first, but cities that now do it above 100,000: Norfolk, Chesapeake, Roanoke, Richmond, Hampton, I think Newport News and Alexandria do not. I don't want to speak for what was happening in the 90s. I tried to go back in the budget document to look for specifics. I was a budget analyst. I'll just give you some of my thoughts as we transitioned into this and kind of looking at it as a budget analyst. 90s was an interesting time because we were catching up on the population growth of the 70s and 80s. There were referendums passed in the late 80s and 90s: schools, rec centers, roadways. And we were catching up on that infrastructure, not only building it, but putting the people in place to maintain it and put in the services. We were also transitioning from a city council that was, a school board that was appointed by city council. About 1995, I believe, was the first elected school board. And just speaking from my perspective, mine alone, the budgets were very contentious at that time, as we were in the mid 90s, school board and city council. So, not saying that's what led to the funding formula, but that's just some of the backdrop. So, at that time, there were seven revenues that were put into the formula. Fifty, and you can see them up there, 53% went to schools, 47% went to cities. And it kind of helped with long-term planning. So, now, you could look at your infrastructure needs over five or 10 years because the schools had to pay for their debt service, and they had to pay for their pay-as-you-go financing. So, capital project financing was within the formula, and the same on the city side. So, you know, we're not looking at one year, we're looking five or 10 years down the road. So, it helped with planning, put a little more predictability into the budget process. And it also created a mechanism for the schools to ask for rate increases or tax increases from the city council. So, that was part of the funding formula, because remember, the school board does not have taxing authority. So, that formula lasted till 2012, and took a break. We didn't have a funding formula in fiscal year '13. And then, a new formula was put in place in fiscal year '14. And I think part of the idea at that time was, why just share those seven revenue streams? There's a lot of other non-dedicated revenue streams in the general fund: hotel tax, restaurant tax. And as the city was investing in economic development tourism, it was a way for schools to share in those revenues as they came back into the general fund. So, I'm gonna go through the specifics of the formula. I'm actually gonna run through a spreadsheet. But just generally, after we have these non-dedicated revenues in the formula, the first thing that comes out is this SOQ match, and I'm gonna go in a little more detail on that in a second: Standards of Quality Match, which is something the schools use for part of their financing. Then, there's a 34% non-dedicated. And anything that's been dedicated by city council gets added back. And like I say, I'm gonna run through a formula and show you that. So, just kind of finishing up with this, the current formula actually expired in 2018. And the city manager wrote a letter to city council, and worked with the superintendent, and recommended that it get extended for a year. And there were kind of two main reasons that the city manager recommended that. One is there were eight council members up for election that November. So, it made some level of sense to wait for that to occur and have, you know, everybody sitting around the table. The second thing, we were in the second year of the biennial budget for the state, so we had some things known, like the Standards of Quality formula. So, and that's what we're here today, is start talking about revising it. So, a lot of numbers here. I'm gonna kind of break this through you, hopefully somewhat quickly, and get you oriented. But first, I'm really gonna focus on fiscal year '20 there, so you can kind of follow the numbers. This is on page 385 of the operating budget, if you want to see more detail. It also, before that, those pages preceding that, is the actual policy that's in place today, so you can read the policy. But basically, all real estate tax that comes to the general fund is in the formula; personal property tax, you know, for machinery and equipment, cars are in it; consumer-related revenues, and we bunched them all together here. But think of sales, hotel, restaurant, B-pole, our utility and telecommunications taxes. And then, the other, there's a big category, like automobile and cigarette tax, but we're trying to, you know, get this all on one page. And then, there's dedications. So, once council dedicates money, that comes into the formula, you know, until we revise it. So, in fiscal year '13, four cents was added on the real estate tax for schools. We talked about that during this past budget process. You may remember, supposed to be in place until they hit $350 million in state revenue, which they did this year. So, you know, now, we're kind of looking at the formula again. 1.25 cent was for kindergarten, when that was enacted in fiscal year '18. So, that blue is gonna be brought back. They're gonna be able to keep that, those two numbers in blue. On the city side, there's been dedications. There was 1.89 cent in fiscal year '16 for general fund-related things; 3.3 cent for mainly stormwater, but some general government, CIP; 2.2, 2.5 cent of that 3.3 is for stormwater. And council added 1.5 cent to it with the adoption of this last budget; 2 cent for roadways, that was put in place in fiscal year '13, along with that 4 cent for schools. That was gonna be put in place until urban funding return, which it never did. You know, we'd get $25, $30 million a year, and now, it's all kind of grant-oriented. And our Public Works Department does a great job getting that money. Outdoor initiative, that money's been in place since the 90s. It goes to Parks and Rec, even though it's in green because it's part of property taxes in general, personal property. There's a 30-cent dedication to public safety, and you can see the other dedications in purple. But once you take those dedications off, you get to this 800 and almost $86 million figure. Well, the first thing that comes off of it is this Standards of Quality funding I talked about. And the problem with that, at least from my perspective, is it's a number that we do not know until December from the governor's standpoint. And it changes all the way into the spring with the General Assembly. And whether, if that number goes much higher than it did the previous year or much lower, it has a big impact on how much money the schools will receive. So, at least one thing that I would propose that we would revisit, it's putting the uncertainty of that, something the schools have to go through, on the city side. So, once you take that out, you have net revenue to be shared. We have 34%, that, we apply to that. That's a number that was developed, and it's changed a little bit as this formula has been updated. And that gives you a discretionary match, we call it, of 242 million. So, I kind of color-coded it so you could see it come back down there. You can see the $30 million of school dedication, that's the 22.8 and 7.1 million dollars up above in blue. You see the SOQ match of 175 million, and the discretionary local match of 242. So, we give the schools through our funding formula almost $448 million a year. What's interesting about that Standards of Quality number, that 175.2, 0.3 million dollars, that is our mandatory match, so to speak. We have to fund that. And you can see, we far exceed it, because I don't think anybody, you know, any city would fund it at the Standard of Quality's basic level. So, here's just some of the issues with the SOQ. You can see it's volatile. It changes somewhat throughout time, and you can see a major change pre-recession and post-recession. So, that has a big impact on the funding formula. Another thing that I just think is interesting to look at, and I think this really demonstrates city council's commitment long-term to education in our city. You can see in 2001, we basically paid the same amount as the state for schools. And you can see the blue line, which is our local funding over time, increasing, and really, post-recession, significantly creating a gap between what the state funds. And what I would point out, if you look at the state funding, you'll see in fiscal year '09, that $364 million. And look at fiscal year '20, they are just returning to the amount that they were given to us 11 years ago. And actually, it's just under. We're rounding the numbers. They still haven't technically got back to the number that they were given in fiscal year '09. But you can see city council's commitment. We had a dip after recession, but it's put a significant amount of money into education. You can also see where the old formula ended and the new formula began. So, just another thing, as we look at this formula, you can see, and we tried to normalize this, to put this on the same axis, so you can, you know, it's not trying to overshow growth one way or another. You can see enrollment, really after the first formula was adopted, started decreasing. And it has been, I think the schools would say they think it's gonna level out in about three or four years. So, it has been starting to level out. And you can see population growth, and you know, we're not in the 80s or 90s anymore, more modest growth that we have every year. So, what we did when we were putting this together, working the city manager, is we looked at the process that was used for fiscal year '14, and that was the recommendation here, is for the superintendent, city manager, and their respective finance staffs to get together and start talking about this. Come up with a recommendation, bring it to city council and school board, have the public input that's necessary, come back with the ordinance, and hopefully implement in fiscal year '21 budget process. And Mayor, that's all I have today.
Questions, anybody?
Could you go back to slide six? I remember when Councilman Glenn Davis, we adopted that ordinance with the budget, saying when the state returned to a certain level of funding, that we would then recoup the tax benefit to the public. Did I hear you correctly that we have met that criteria?
We, and we talked about, you're exactly right, Mr. Moss. We talked about it during the budget process this year. So, this past year, and the way it was written, it was the city manager was supposed to make a recommendation to city council. Since we were in the middle of that process, you know, city manager recommended the 4-cent stay, and that, you know, the time to revisit that would be during this update and review of the funding formula.
A lot of people were here, could we get a copy of that ordinance?
Yes, absolutely.
Tax, all the council members could read it? Because that was a promise we made to the public, and if we're not gonna keep it, we just need to articulate why.
Like I say, it was a recommendation, the big thing is a recommendation from the city manager.
The, I could act the next steps if I could, and I'm not gonna repeat. I shared with all of you an individual email about my thoughts about funding formulas. I think they're inherently entitlements, and they lead to overspending in good times and underspending in bad times. And there's no relationship between funding formulas and educational outcomes. There's no empirical analysis that shows that. So, I think everything ought to be a requirement-based and compete against everything else, you know? Lower city stuff, we might want to lower class sizes without raising taxes by cutting something on the city side. This never, schools and cities never compete, and the default is always to raise taxes. So, that's my concern. That gets me back to slide 10, if we could please. I understand this is like a negotiation that takes place, but I've never been, except for this organization, I've never been involved in an organization where we have teams that go out to look at basically what something should have, without receiving some general guidance from the Board of Directors. We may choose not to provide any, but generally speaking, you don't send people off to negotiate on your behalf unless you have an understanding of what you hope the outcome was. Because what happens, that meeting across the street, where everybody sees, that is not a meeting that fosters deliberation or discussion. So, I hope that if we're going this route, there's a step between the first and the second, that before someone brings back a recommendation in a big crowd and puts it on TV, that the council has a chance to understand what that's going to be and decide whether or not that's something we want to be publicly engaged on. And I think that's, I think that's fair to us. Otherwise, it goes out to the public, and it's very hard to have a discussion when it's out here, to have trades in a room of 22 people in an hour and a half. That doesn't, it's like watching the United Nations on TV. It's interesting, but it's not very productive. So, I hope we can have a different interim step, and that before we have this draft resolution, that we'd have a normal briefing and discussion, an intervening Tuesday, and then a vote, so we're not compressing the public, and the public understands. And my own view is, I don't, that's just my own guidance, I'm not interested in raising taxes. That's just my own view. And, but, and I don't, and I think we ought to know what the, and we ought to, need to understand the 2%. Let me just give you an example of why I say that, is we know we have a tremendous deficit, shortfall for remodeling our schools. They've come and told us. But yet, the school board is actively considering taking on a new liability of building a new academy with the Brock Center. Now, I'm not saying that's their priority choice, and if they can do that within the legacy funding formula, more power to you. But if you're asking me to raise taxes when we have a huge backlog in recapitalizing schools, and we're taking on something new when we can't maintain the old, well, then I think we, it is fair game to ask the merits of the tax increase. I'm just sharing my own perspective as we enter in here, so that there's no surprises on the back end, and that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
For your time. Next, I'm gonna ask Public Works, they should be coming through the door? And we're gonna load Coastal. Ross Howard, I don't have anybody at the computer, so. Phil, you got something on the computer?
I do not, but I don't know.
All right. Thank you.
But that doesn't count for me.
So, lots of dredging going on in your city, members of council, from the oceanfront to the Lynn Haven, to bid openings associated with Sand Bridge, and then future dredging expected back in the Lynn Haven. And so far, so good. Weather cooperating, knocking on wood here that we continue. And I ask Phil because we are really meeting some high productivity numbers out there because of the good weather, to provide you an update. So, Phil, thanks for being here.
Very good. So, as Dave said, we have a lot going on in the beach nourishment, shore protection world, dredging, high tourist season coming in hurricane season. So, Dave's kind of asked us to give a state of the beaches overview. And so, I'll start by saying the state of our beaches is strong. We're in great shape. We've been doing a lot of stuff. Here are beach segments with both our inlets. What's really incredible is, in a 24, 26-month period, we're going to have placed sand on all of our public beaches. And that's never happened before, and they're all doing tremendously good. So, I'm gonna walk you through briefly what is going on currently. We're currently doing an iteration of Operation Big Beach. This is what it looked like back in 2001 when we built the beach. This is all the culmination of the hurricane protection project. So, the combination of the new seawall and the beach provide us that hurricane protection. We put 4 million cubic yards in one shot on that beach and dramatically changed its behavior. It's still a naturally erosional beach, but it took a couple of years for it to start acting like it used to, after we added that much sand. Again, to maintain the beach, maintain that level of hurricane protection, we replenished in 2013, put another 1.4 million cubic yards on it. And here we are in 2019, doing it again. And this is to maintain that beach, bless you, sir, maintain that beach in a wide enough dimension to provide hurricane protection, and of course, we get the wonderful benefit of recreation and tourism as well. This time, we're putting 1.4 million cubic yards of sand on the beach. We're going to place it from 15th to 70th Street. South of the pier, between Rudy Inlet and the pier, we replenish and maintain that zone by maintenance dredging of Rudy Inlet. So, we restrict our beach replenishment activities to north of 15th Street. And frankly, north of 70th Street, it doesn't need sand. It is a very broad, wide beach up there. A couple screenshots, we're doing a pretty robust information program. Now, this project came about all of a sudden. We didn't have time to plan it a year in advance and let folks who were asking for fulfillment packages to know about it. But since then, we've been maintaining a couple of platforms where you can go and see where we are currently. We just crossed 60% complete last night. Couple shots of it, Dave, there's the Cavalier Beach Club this morning. The Corps of Engineers, of course, is our partner in this endeavor through the construction of the hurricane protection project and this replenishment. They're maintaining their own website, and this has become very useful for our hoteliers and other resort interests who are trying to plan it. And that is, of course, available to the general public, but it's really to allow the staff down at the oceanfront to understand what's happening next and where they're going to next. So, just in summary for the resort beach, since '01, we've put about 7 million cubic yards on the beach. Our cost, the local sponsor, has been $20 million for that much sand, which is quite a good deal. And we've documented through the federal process of calculating storm damages averted, that so far, this hurricane protection project has produced a benefit of damage aversion exceeding $430 million. So, we're walking around the beach, or around the coast. Croatan Beach came into focus in 2016. We commissioned a report. It generated recommendation for a 50,000 cubic yard placement to fully reestablish Croatan Beach. What had happened was, we had two particularly sand-averse years in a row. Sand storms will move a lot of sand. Then, if you're blessed with a three-month, four-month period of nice calm weather, a lot of it will rebuild naturally. We didn't really have horrible storms, but what we had were storms that were timed very inappropriately for beach building. So, as soon as what you would expect to be the rebuilding process, we endured another two-week-long nor'easter of mild category, but it just stopped the beach from rebuilding. Caused great alarm. I'm happy to report the beach has recovered significantly since that time, but we still have a 50,000 cubic yard replenishment planned for this fall as part of the Rudy Inlet Federal Dredging Project. We'll take 50,000 yards of that material and spread it along the beach. We also, at Croatan this past year, our operations folks moved 19,000 cubic yards of sand out of the sand trap, the Rudy Inlet sedimentation basin, and spread that material along the dunes and restored the dune system. It's quite successful. The dunes look great down there. And we just planted it this March, and the grasses are doing well. Sand Bridge is another huge success story. We have a contract in place. You know, for those of you who weren't here as we developed this project and when it first began, it long suffered from erosion without any governmental attention. And it got to the point where taking no action was costing more than taking action. We were losing the road every year. We lost, I think, a total of 54 homes. And as I've told you before, every time the wind blew, CNN would show up to show the world that Virginia Beach is falling in the ocean. It really was becoming a problem. So, we ultimately, with your support, fixed it. In 1998, we did our first replenishment. This slide's probably a little out of place, but I wanted to give you the history of funding. It's a federally cost-shared project, and the core is our partner. They're actually executing the contract on our behalf, but this is how the funding has gone. We couldn't wait any longer, and so, in 1998, city council authorized paying for the whole project. And then, in '03, the first time we replenished it, the federal government was able to live up to their commitment of 65% funding. Then, the third cycle, there was no federal money available. Council authorized us to pay more than our share. We ended up paying 80%. Fourth cycle was horrible. Congress was not doing much to help us, and we ended up paying for it ourselves. And we're doing the same thing this time, although I'm happy to report that there was $3.1 million put into the civil works budget for Sand Bridge. So, they will be paying at least that part of it. Won't go through each replenishment, but in '13, we put 2.2 million cubic yards of sand on the beach. It's a five-mile-long beach. It really has transformed. If you look in those pictures and think back to what it looked like in 1998, it is remarkably different there now. And it's done a lot to stabilize the community and property values and quality of life for them as well. So, we have a new contract. We've opened it. We've awarded it. It's the same contractor who's doing the oceanfront. They, by the way, are a great firm. It's Great Lakes Dredging Dock out of Chicago, and they are really a class act and doing a good job for us up there. The contract, the Sand Bridge, will start in November after the turtle time-of-year restriction ends and Great Lakes comes back from another engagement. They may have to finish the resort first. They may have to do a few weeks of work there to finish, because they have to stop in September because of the turtle issue. But they will come back, and they will do Sand Bridge this winter. So, again, there it is. We put 9 million cubic yards on the beach since 1998. It has cost the local sponsor, and you all do remember- It has cost the local sponsor, and you all do remember that the citizens, property owners at Sand Bridge are actually paying the lion's share of the local cost through a special service district. But as it works out to be about $6 a cubic yard, that's been actually a very successful program. And we again have documented over $100 million in savings from storm damage aversion since we initiated the project. Now, quickie on the Bay Beaches. Again, we're working all of our beaches in this two year period, and it's really, really been phenomenal. These are standard storm shots, but it shows you why there's such a need for doing this kind of work. Cape Henry, we're calling this a beach replenishment, beach nourishment restoration effort, but really it is a federal navigation project, the dredging of Lynn Haven Inlet. And all that sand is being placed alternatively on Cape Henry Beach and Ocean Park Beach. This year, it's Cape Henry's turn, and they're getting about 170,000 cubic yards of sand. They just finished the beach portion of the work and placed approximately 170,000 cubic yards. We ended up paying, with council's approval, a formal agenda item, we paid the Corps a total of $750,000. Almost half of that was money that we voluntarily paid to fully fund the project so that the Corps could dig the inlet the full depth, and we could benefit by receiving the maximum amount of sand placed on our beach, and that's why we did it. Ocean Park Beach was last replenished in 2013 with the same project, but I'm happy to report that with the new project the council has approved in the CIP for Chesapeake Bay Beach Resiliency, Ocean Park Beach will be our first real beach replenishment for Ocean Park, where we're currently in the permit review phase. The JPA is under review. We have plans at 60%, Dave. Real estate is acquired. Borrow pit has been acquired. We're going to use the same borrow site as we use for Chesapeake Beach. So we're looking forward to advertising this contract and getting it moving early in 2020, which again would be a first. And just to say another word or two about the Bay Beach Resiliency Project, it was Dave's initiative, which we wholeheartedly support, of course, but for years, all we've been able to do on our Bay Beaches is alternate where the Lynn Haven Inlet sand goes. We haven't really done much to increase the storm protective value of those Bay Beaches. And so a project was formulated. There's enough seed money in that project for us to be able to do this Ocean Park restoration, a future appropriation that we hope comes to fruition. We'll fund similar operation over on Cape Henry Beach, where we're actually going to raise and widen the beach on purpose and try to maintain it at that higher and wider width instead of just taking whatever sand's available from Lynn Haven Inlet and spreading it on the beach and hoping for the best. So we're looking forward to that. Chesapeake Beach, I briefed you about this before, but we completed in May of 18 its first ever replenishment. It had been suffering from erosion for decades, and we had issues as we did at Cape Henry Beach, where our city attorney had to help us wade through the claims of private ownership and secure the right to a public interest in the beach so that we could spend money on it and repair it, and we did indeed do that. This was the area that we placed the sand. That's what it looked like before, and then what it looked like after. And again, it's been somewhat transformational. There is money in the budget for future replenishments, so our intention is to try to maintain the beach at that dimension. And although I didn't really say these things, in summary, let me suggest that it's very important to us to maintain our relationship with the Corps of Engineers. The civil works mission is directly, of the federal government, is directly applicable to Virginia Beach, where we've got a large population, a vibrant economy, being threatened by the ocean. That's exactly what that program is for, and we need to continue to be involved. As I mentioned, we're evolving the Bay Beaches program. We're going to continue that. And one thing I want to leave you with is beach replenishment is a very important strategy in our adaptation to sea level rise. Not only does it provide protection from those storms, but it's also very easily alterable as sea conditions and climate conditions warrant. We can simply raise our beaches by adding more sand. So keep that in mind. It is an important part of our resiliency efforts. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? John, then Barbara.
No. You win.
Relative to Little Creek, the bays, if you go around the curve, you know, the water that the sands end to ship, has there been any outreach to the Department of Defense or the Navy's?
Absolutely.
Have a rock about getting them to dissipate or look the lawyer, whatever.
We are coordinating.
Make sure that we do ours, that they pay shares, that we got this uniformity and give us greater thing from just shifting that, oh, good.
Well, the inlet actually separates the two cells, so there's not much communication of sand between Ocean View and so forth. But the real area of coordination where we're active with the Navy is in the upcoming port deepening. As we deepen Thimble Shoals Channel to match the new deeper harbor, there's going to be a large volume of sand available, and we all need to work together so that that's a smooth operation and we can take advantage of that sand along our Bay Beaches.
I know Hampton's putting in a big bid on that sand as well.
Well, sure, everyone is. Yep.
Barbara?
I just didn't think we would ever get to the point where we had something for all of the beaches. It's just amazing. I just think y'all have done a fantastic job of creating ways to deal with all of these beaches and using these sand sources. You know, our first sand projects for the oceanfront were truck hauls.
Borrow pits.
And that borrow pit that's now the Sherwood Lake's lake, a lot of that went down to the oceanfront and then out in the ocean. And I know a lot of the time that we were not able to do things. For example, at Sand Bridge, it was not only the lack of funding, but the lack of a sand source.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just fantastic to hear the way it's all worked together, you know, in developing these sand sources, because, I mean, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a ridge left if we were still hauling buckets of sand, and it certainly wouldn't have made very much beach. So in whatever length of time this is, I guess it's probably 30 years then, huh? It's taken to get to this point, but it's just fantastic, and I think y'all have done a tremendous job.
Great. Thank you. With your support.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
So Phil, is the erosion and accretion, is that cyclical? Because I know when we looked, when we were doing the things about the ownership of the beach years ago, some of the old maps kind of indicated that where Shore Drive is was actually the coastline. And then, but then there was also, I guess, in some areas, streets that are platted out in the water. So does that action change over time?
It can, and that's more of on a geologic time scale than a human time scale. For most of, most of the time that we've been a Commonwealth, the Atlantic Ocean Beaches have been in an erosional state. Sometimes it's much more rapid, sometimes it's much slower, but it's just where we are geologically right now.
But in the bay, is that typically accreted or?
No. No, it's typically, it's much more stable. The wave energy is an order of magnitude smaller, and that's what drives sand movement. And so it's a much slower, almost an order of magnitude slower rate of natural erosion.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great report.
Thanks, Phil. Great work. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mark Reed from the, he's our historic preservation planner, and he's here to provide us an update on the certified local government program. And he received a fairly extensive packet on Friday. This was a rescheduled briefing that we had originally had two weeks before, but overcome by other events. So Mark, appreciate you being here, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, ladies and gentlemen, council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to give you an update on our certified local government program. The program is from the federal government and is their program for local governments to do historic preservation. And it really is a partnership of three governments. The federal government through the National Park Service, the state government through our state historic preservation office, which is the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, and then the local governments. Here in Virginia, there are 36 localities that are certified local governments, and Virginia Beach became a certified local government in August of 2016. As I move ahead through the presentation, I will be using DHR to designate the state agency and CLG to designate the certified local government. I'll try to keep the acronyms to those two for you. Through our benefits of being a certified local government community, one, we get technical support specifically or more directly from DHR. They have professionals on staff that we don't have here in the city government. They have archaeologists, they have architectural historians, and so we're able to utilize that expertise on a regular basis. There are also grants that are available to us. There are CLG grants that are available only to certified local government communities, and they cover a number of things in the historic preservation area, surveys of historic resources, nominations to the national register, training for your local review board, and strategic planning. So there are several things that we can benefit from there. They also have a cost share program where certified local governments get some priority in that, and we've made use of that over the last couple of years, the cost share program. And then finally, we have free access to their database, the Virginia Cultural Resource Information System. So as soon as we became a CLG, it saved Public Works $500. They utilize it quite a bit for all of their planning for roadways. They have to do the environmental planning, and that includes historic resources. Here in Virginia Beach, we have three components to our historic preservation program. Obviously, the city staff through the planning and the community development department, we provide administration, coordination, and then guidance for the program. And then we have two bodies that are appointed by city council that are integral to our preservation program. The Historic Preservation Commission includes 15 members and two student members. They advise city council and the planning department on all issues relative to historic preservation. So think of them as community wide, that's their focus. And within the context of certified local government, their interests are in these surveys of historic resources and the nomination of historic districts in strategic planning and in public awareness and public participation. We also have the Historical Review Board. It consists of eight members appointed by city council. They look after the 16 historic and cultural districts that we have. So I'll be talking about historic districts quite a bit in the presentation. There's a difference between our local historic and cultural districts and then national register and state register. So here in the local districts is where you have your restrictions, you have your protections. The properties within those districts then have to go through a process to get approval for new construction, repairs, et cetera. The other districts are honorary, and I'll get to those as we move ahead. The Historical Review Board does issue certificates of appropriateness for the projects then in those, in those 16 districts. When we became a certified local government in 2016, we were required to enter into an agreement with, with DHR. Basically, by June of 2019, they wanted us to demonstrate improvement in several areas. And some of these areas are a little boilerplate that they are providing to all new certified local governments, so it may not fit us exactly. And the first one is an example, to extend historic zoning to additional properties in multi-property districts that are listed in or eligible for listing in the national register. When we became a CLG, we only had one such district, and these sorts of things are voluntary. It's not something we can impose on them. So we really haven't worked forward with that because we are really just getting national register eligible historic districts through some of the activities that we're doing with the Historic Preservation Commission. But we have kind of done it within the last couple of years the opposite way. We had a, already a zoning district where we had it recognized national register of historic places, and that's this district here, the Courthouse Village and Municipal Center, National Register Historic District. They did want us to extend historic zoning to individual properties listed on or eligible for listing in the national register, and you did that. You're the ones that make the determination. The Newitt Cottage down at the oceanfront, as well as the lifesaving old Coast Guard Station at the oceanfront, we extended that, that protection to them. They have asked us to extend local zoning protection to archaeological resources currently in the historic districts. There is no provision for that. And in talking with DHR, there are very few communities that have that, so we're trying to work through the details of what that means, particularly having to go back and try to impose that over some existing districts. So it'll require a lot of public input as we move forward, particularly with the property owners in the districts. But we are working forward with that, and ultimately, we'll come back to you for your approval. And we're going to try to put everything that needs your approval together in one package so we're not piecemealing it to you. And that includes the next couple of items. They want us to add another professional to the review board, and we've already done that, so the code calls for two professionals, that's architect, archaeologist, architectural historian, that kind of thing. We have, as I said, the code calls for two. We have three on there now, so we're doing it in practice. We just haven't codified it. As I said, we want to come to council just, just once. And then I'm not sure that Kay Wilson thinks we need to do the next one, but because of requirement, requiring it, we'll figure out how to do it. I know the last couple of times, there have been vacancies within the, the review board council has moved very quickly to, to fill those vacancies. So as I said, some of those things are kind of boilerplate. And then finally, for strategic planning, they want us to either develop a plan, which we have, but it does need updating, or at least to accomplish preservation planning activities that are consistent with the Secretary of Material Standards, which I believe that we're doing. We've been working very closely with DHR, but we are going to be updating that preservation plan here very shortly. One of the things that helps you to update your preservation plan is to do assessments and surveys of your historic resources, and that was the other primary requirement of this agreement with DHR, and we are actively working on that. We had never done any kind of archaeological assessment here in Virginia Beach, and so we have moved forward with that. This is not going out and digging a bunch of holes and finding what's there. Instead, it is looking at the known resources that you have. What condition are they in? So you're giving an assessment at that point in time, looking at predictive models for where you might find the resources, and also looking if you can find some other potential archaeological areas. So in 2018, we completed a study of the northern half of Virginia Beach. We received a cost share grant to help us do that from the state. And the image you see there is the predictive model that they, the firm put together for where you might find, expect to find prehistoric resources, and as you might expect, it's mostly along the waterways. We have one for the southern half coming up. We're just getting it underway. We again have received a cost share grant from the state for that. And the cost share grants, especially with this archaeological assessment, really good for me, I'm not an archaeologist, the cost share grants are actually managed completely by DHR. So they do, we help, we, you know, obviously, we put together a scope of work in the application, but then they do all the procurement, they manage the project, and it's really, really their baby as much as it is ours. And we're, they're doing the procurement right now for that, and we're expecting it to be completed in May of 2020. The other part of surveys is architectural resources, and we completed architectural resource surveys in the early 90s, 1992, 1993. So there is a need to do. So there is a need to do an update of that. Typically, you're looking at buildings that are 50 years of age or older. So in 19, early 1990s, they were essentially looking at buildings that were pre-World War I. Now, last year in 2018, we were looking at 1968 and earlier, and I don't have to tell you, at Virginia Beach, from beginning of World War II to 1968, there was a lot of construction activity. A lot of buildings were built, and so there was a lot that we could update. And we felt that we should focus on the neighborhoods, and I'll talk about that here briefly. But we did complete that in 2018, and now we have one under contract for the southern part of the city. So we're going to move ahead with that as well. In fact, tomorrow, our consultants are meeting with Mrs. Headley's history group down in Creeds to get the benefit of their information and their knowledge of that area. They know it a lot better than I do, and certainly a lot better than our consultants do at this point. We also have a public information session tomorrow evening down at the Creeds Rortan Barn, so we are getting that process underway with some public involvement. I know that Mrs. Wilson really wants you to have the benefit of the architectural survey that we did complete in 2018. In your packet, you had just the abstract and recommendations, but there in front of you, you have the full report. And we looked at neighborhoods primarily because that is really how the northern part of Virginia Beach developed in post-World War II, and even, you know, in the pre-World War II era, that mostly was still developing that way. Within that context, they identified nine neighborhoods that are potentially eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And we looked at neighborhoods from oceanfront to Kempsville, from the bay to, not quite all the way to the southern boundary of where we had the northern, the northern half marked off because there wasn't quite as much development in the 50s and 60s down, you know, in the courthouse area. But we really did cover most of the city. As part of that, they also did individual surveys of buildings, 283. We'd asked them to do 100, but then DHR said, well, in each of these neighborhoods, we want you to do three or four of the buildings there as representatives. So we got a lot of bang for our buck out of this project. And within that context of individual resources, there were 27 that they identified as being potentially eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, mostly within the context of multiple property documentation. That's another way of recognizing buildings that may not individually, on their own, qualify, meet the criteria for the National Register, but as a group, they're important to the locality, and they do. So an example would be 1950s, 1960s motels, hotels at the oceanfront. It's a style of architecture, it served a specific purpose that was important to us. We're a tourism-based economy even then, and we still have several of those left, Cuddy Sark, Jefferson Manor motel apartments, Blue Marlin. So we have several that could qualify, and so we're going to be looking into these multiple property documentation processes. And one of the things that I'm really proud of is that since we completed the study, when a community calls up DHR and says, how do we, how do we survey these 20th century resources? They, you know, it's not like it's a colonial building, and they're pointing to our study now. They're saying, here, see what Virginia Beach did, that's, this is a way to do it. Last week, I was at a workshop in Smithfield with some members of the commission and the review board. It was certified local government architectural review boards presented by DHR, and they had a presentation on modern architecture. And one of their last slides was this picture right here, telling everybody, if you want to know how to do the 20th century, you can see what Virginia Beach has done. I mentioned the neighborhoods, and those are potentially eligible, according to our consultants for the National Register. These aren't the big mansions up on the hill, these all have characteristics that are important to the way Virginia Beach developed. They still have some character and integrity, and you're probably familiar with most of them, since city council, you know the whole city. Aragona Village, Chesapeake Beach, Doyle Town, Eureka Park, Ellen J. Gardens, Laurel Manor, Queen City, Sea-Tac, and Thoroughgood. So it's a variety of types of neighborhoods, it's different areas of the city. Four of these are historically African-American neighborhoods, Doyle Town and Ellen J. Gardens, Queen City, and Sea-Tac. Laurel Manor is a really interesting one, certainly wasn't on my radar, but according to the study, it's the first prefabricated neighborhood in Virginia Beach, Norfolk. It's a style of home, a prefabricated home called the Gunnison Home. So it's really, you know, they found that little gem for us. So we were real excited about that, and just want to tell you briefly how we would move ahead with putting, you know, trying to get these neighborhoods onto the National Register, and I'll talk about Sea-Tac, which you're all familiar with. It is one of the oldest African-American communities in Virginia, if not the United States. It was identified as potentially eligible in the 1992 survey, but nothing was done. We had no program in place, no one knew what to do, we had no funding for it. So again, in this survey, with it being determined to be potentially eligible, Historic Preservation Commission thought that we should start with them, wrote a letter in March to the Civic League, and that's how we would work these. We'd start with the Civic League, if they don't have one, we'd have to start with the property owners. But work with the Civic Leagues, these have to be voluntary, the city can't just, the federal government just doesn't impose these historic districts. So work with the Civic League to see if they are interested, and keep them informed throughout the process. And part of that process is you have to establish the boundaries. So recommended boundaries may not be what the neighborhood thinks are their traditional boundaries, because it's going to be based upon the built environment. What is there that represents the characteristics architecturally of the neighborhood that is trying, that we're trying to recognize? So even though Sea-Tac has a history going back 200 years, there aren't any 200-year-old buildings there. Most of them are from the 1920s, 30s, 40s, 50s, residential for the most part. So that's the character of the neighborhood that would be potentially eligible for the National Register. And as they do the district boundaries, they try to eliminate as much of the non-contributing resources as possible. So they don't want to include the food lion at Bird Neck and 17th Street. They try, so that's not part of what's included, even though certainly the Sea-Tac neighborhood considers that part of their neighborhood today. So the National Register boundaries are always going to, or generally going to differ a little bit from neighborhood boundaries. But as I mentioned, public engagement is the main part of the process. Work with the Civic Leagues. As the process goes on, we have to contact all of the property owners within the district and even those adjacent to the district. So it is a big part of the process, the community engagement. There are essentially two steps, and with the, within the context of these two steps, we would hire a professional cultural resources firm to, that specializes in National Register nominations, to actually do the work for us. The first step is preliminary information form. With that study going to the state, it's the state review board that determines whether or not it's potentially eligible for the National Register. So that's the first hurdle you want to get to, even though our consultant has said it doesn't really matter until the state review board says it. And then the second step is the nomination. So once you get that determination of eligibility, then move ahead with the nomination. And just to reiterate, the designation is honorary and not restrictive or protective. You did get in your packet the abstract and the recommendations, just a few of them I'm going to point out. The, our consultants thought we should move ahead with a city-wide context for development post-World War II in the northern half. That would help when you're looking at an individual neighborhood to determine how important it might be within the context of all that development. Move ahead with some of these National Register nominations, including the multiple property. We have a Virginia Beach historical register, doesn't have districts on it, it's just individual properties. They identified several properties in the study that they thought would be eligible for that. And then some, we're always looking to try to provide incentives for preservation, it's, it can be challenging. And then some of the things that the commission is doing already through their research grant program, they've sponsored a lot of highway markers recently, some oral history projects as well, and some interpretive signage. So some of this we're already doing, they're just saying, keep doing it, do more of it. So for us, what are we going to do to move forward? DHR will provide us with a review of how we're doing as a certified local government at year four, so about a year from now. We'll expect them to come and do that. The, we're not going to have to sign another agreement, they will just give us recommendations. So it'll be a little bit more informal. One of the things we expect, in fact, I'm surprised it wasn't in the original agreement, is that they'll want us to update our standards and guidelines for the historic and cultural districts, that's the restrictive, protective ones. Since we've done these survey updates, we're going to need to update our survey plan and also our strategic plan as well. And then we're going to move ahead with some of the National Register nominations, too. So we believe that the CLG designation has really helped us to focus our efforts for historic preservation. We think we've met, and even exceeded, what was expected of us as a new CLG, and we feel that our historic preservation program is in a pretty good place right now here in Virginia Beach. So welcome to take any questions you might have.
Questions or comments?
I'm not going to brag too much more, but I'll let DHR brag for us.
All right, thank you very much, Mark, very, very good presentation.
Thank you.
If I just might compliment Mark Reed. We are very fortunate to have a professional, a PhD in this, in this business. We're, every time we listen to him, we learn something, we see something new like what's on the screen behind me right now, and we're very fortunate to have someone who loves his work so much, and I can't compliment him enough. He reassures us that we are in good hands, compliant with all the regulations, and progressive in the way we pursue a relatively young city, but with a long history.
Rosemary.
I want to say something, too. The Preservation Commission members are crazy about Mark. They just love working with him, he gives great guidance, and I have friends on the review board that tell me the same thing. So I think with him and the great people we've had involved, we've really accomplished a lot of good things.
They are a great group to work with. They're a very involved group, very passionate, and it's been an honor to work with them.
Okay, Michael.
If I could just add on to the compliments, before I served on council, I had an opportunity to serve on the Confederate Statue Roundtable, which was initiated by the Historic Preservation Committee, and really, and led by two citizens and Mark Reed. And I just think it's worth noting how much passion Mark brings to the job, expertise, but also as well, how these discussions about history within our city have applications that are relevant to the discussions we're having today that impact us very directly, such as with Confederate statues. So I want to thank you not only for the work you're doing to preserve history, but how history is guiding us into the future, and with a lot of support from your department. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
And so, Mark did kind of a lead-in about our conversations about Sea-Tac. And so we wanted to couple his briefing with our Director of Planning coming forth to discuss what we're doing in the neighborhood, the community of Sea-Tac. So Bobby, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members. This briefing should be fairly short, but this does circle back to the concerns that we had over an application off of Bird Neck Road that dealt with the Sea-Tac community. And what was very clear, a lack of communication that probably should be expanded on. So at the direction of council, planning staff began an engagement process to try to open dialogue back up with the Sea-Tac community. Just to start kind of, for, opportunity for us to take a look at, these are all the boundaries of some very significant things that are going, that happen in this area around Bird Neck and the oceanfront. The yellow boundary is the boundary of the resort area strategic action plan. The red boundary is the suburban focus area that's specifically for Sea-Tac. The dotted black line is what was identified by the Sea-Tac community as being the boundaries of their community during the previous 2016 public outreach that we've done. The blue line is the strategic economic growth area that's there due to its proximity to Oceana and the limitations that properties have because of that proximity to Oceana. So we have a very specific call-out in the comprehensive plan about how we should address properties in this area. And then also the green area down at the bottom, you see, that's Alice Creek and the aquarium. So we have a lot of things that are overlapping and touching each other that have, at some points, maybe different perspectives of what they believe is progress to move those things forward. This started off as a good explanation for us to understand when we sit down with the community. So part of our goals as we work through this process with the community is to properly recognize Sea-Tac. I have a great planning staff, I do want to introduce Michelle Coleman, who is our project manager. She's one of our planners that we just recently, I guess, right when I got, came aboard, promoted into a planner-two position, and she's taking on this role to help us kind of organize this community outreach and to have good discussions with the Sea-Tac community, her along with Mark Reed, bringing along the historic component as well. But we needed to hit reset. In 2014, 15, and 16, there was a lot of discussion with the community, and there was a misunderstanding and maybe some lack of action, to be honest, to move forward to properly recognize the community. So part of the things that we want to do is to understand the expectations of the community. That's one of our goals that we have set forward. And what does, what does the community want through this process? It's clearly not words on paper, so what do we want, what do they see as being a victory? Discovering ways to recognize the history of the community. And the important thing is not to recognize Sea-Tac, but the community at large. Mark had alluded to it in general when he was talking about the physical characteristics of Sea-Tac, which is a, which is a finite resource as far as buildings and structures. But this also talks about where the community believes people that were a part of it have gone to or were a part of, which is much larger. And when you think about a neighborhood, it's not necessarily just the subdivision that you live in, right? It's the people that you, that you communicate with and that you have a family with. And so this is important to make sure that we understand that in context, as well as the other competing requirements that we have. We do also want to update the suburban focus area to be more actionable. The key is, as you looked at the suburban focus area, which I did a presentation on for that Bird Neck Road rezoning that we had, I did put the, put those goals forward from the suburban focus area, and a lot of it were just words, okay? There wasn't actionable items that we could measure to say, this is, this is what we're going to try to do. In order to do that, it's, it takes a lot of sitting down with the community to understand how we can get to action, what things we can do legally, what things we can't do, to go through, and this was an honest discussion that we had, and was, what, no one knows the difference, a lot of people don't know the difference between zoning regulations, which is the regulatory requirements, versus comprehensive plan policy, okay? And how do you bridge the two? So there's a big education component to this so that we can understand how we can get to the goals of the community. And through that, we hope to do that through updating the suburban focus area requirements. And then again, also identify land use regulations that will help protect the community. So actually, coming back to that discussion about what is compatible with the neighborhood, maybe that's not the words that need to be used, maybe it's something more specific about what the expectation is for development. And also, we do want to review with the community the possibility of historic recognition. As Mark had stated earlier, the Historic Preservation Commission had sent a letter to reach back out to Sea-Tac to begin the discussions about a potential recognition for them in the state and national historic districts. That's a potential that they have. We're still in discussions with them, they're trying to field this process out as well. What I'm going to give you is just a pretty succinct timeline of how we've tried to continue to move this forward. April 23rd, it was pretty much right after the discussion of the rezoning, staff met to try to come up with a game plan so that we could go out to the community. There's a big timeline gap here, as we understand, of the situations that we've been dealing with, but we reconvene and were able to talk with MLT, the leadership of the city, to also discuss, okay, what direction should we go as we move forward with our outreach? Then we met this past Thursday with Then we met this past Thursday with the C-TAC Civic League Executive Board. So, we were able to meet with them and just, we sat down, Mr. Tower, Mr. Rouse were at the meeting, as well as Marshall, Mark, myself, and Mr. Williams. We were at the meeting and just had a very frank and open dialogue with them to discuss kind of some of their concerns. We got the okay from them to come back and to potentially start some public outreach through some community events. They gave us some ideas so that we could start this dialogue and conversation with the community, not just those that attend the Civic League meeting, but also those that are in the community at large. So our goal is to, in September, is to actually walk the neighborhood again. The Planning Commission in 2015 did the same thing, but we want to hit reset, and there are new people at the table from C-TAC as well. We want them to walk the community with us. We'll hopefully come back after we walk the community, talk about the things that they are interested in protecting or having recognition for, that came up a lot. Then we can step back and go, okay, well, let's talk about what things we control and how that makes a difference. Zoning regulation, policy direction, and things like that. And then we'll also continue, as we're, after we do that walk, we'll continue to do our engagement activities, because again, we want to get as much input from the community as possible. As you know, as we do some of our standard meetings, you tend to get the same people show up to the meetings, so we want to try to do our best to reach out and meet the public where they are. They gave us a great idea to come to their back, to one of their back-to-school events that's being held by one of the churches. They said, speak to the pastor or one of the elders at the church, see if you can get a booth, bring some toys, bring some games, and open up to the community so that they can start the conversation with you. And that's our goal, that's our new approach to public outreach, is we're still going to have to do the typical public meeting, but we're going to try to meet people where they are so that we can get some true feedback from those that don't typically come to these meetings. And then also, as we're, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update, which will bring a briefing to council in the next couple of months, we'll also incorporate some updates to the suburban focus area nine, which is the C-TAC suburban focus area. So the point of that is to make sure that our policies, council approves the policy direction that we want to go in, and then we can then start moving forward with some other things, some actionable items that can come out of that, which may deal with the recognition, or which may deal with zoning regulations, may deal with a few other things that the council has control over. So, that's an important piece to this as well. We put this in your packet, this is what we're using to keep ourselves on target, so this is more just for your information, it's the same thing that was on the previous slide, but in a linear timeline. Now, in conjunction with this, there's a much longer process to, as Mark had alluded to in his previous presentation, that deals with the preliminary information form and moving forward with trying to see if there's a want from the community to be recognized as a state and national historic district. There's a lot of legwork that has to be done, it's over, I believe it's over three years' worth of work, just about, two and a half years' worth of work that it takes. And there's a, before we can even start doing any of that, we want to make sure that we have buy-in from the community, right? We want to make sure that they understand what this would mean to them, okay? Understanding that this is just a recognition process first, okay? That's what this is. But we want to make sure that they understand that, so that there's not just the city coming in and imposing something on them without them having that understanding. So we want to make sure we step back, we talk to them about this requirement before we move forward, and we get their buy-in, okay? And they made it very clear to us that they said, this is just still the beginning of the discussion, we're not sure if we want to move forward with this, and we're fine with that. It doesn't change our outreach for them for the other portion of it, but it may cause us to pivot if they choose not to move forward with their community being designated. Again, more of this timeline, the review timeframe, as far as all the legwork that needs to be done in order to properly identify and collate all the resources that are in the area as well, and then all the submittal timelines that need to go along with that. It is a very labor-intensive process, it's a time-consuming process, it's almost like writing a grant essentially, and managing it, and sending all the documentation that they need. Luckily, as we have them partnering, as we're partnering with DHR to do this, and we have a very good team that's provided the first half of the historic survey for the northern part of the city, we feel confident that they have the ability to help us through this process pretty quickly. And again, in here, this is, again, same timeline, I just wanted to have this, so that you could see it in this linear fashion, so that you can kind of see some of the things that need to get ticked off, but it's the same information that was shown on the previous slides. And this goes for three slides' worth, so just make sure to understand. There's a lot of work that goes into this, as far as a meeting with the public and holding public meetings. If we do move forward, there will be public meetings that the city holds, but there will also be public meetings that are held by the state, and that's important to know. That way, people know that there are these other parties that are coming in to hold these meetings, and we want to make sure we let them know that, and that their input is very important to this process. Part of this is identifying resources that we're not aware of. So part of it, when they go to the community, we want to hear that oral history, Mark had referred to oral history in his previous presentation. And there are some things that we don't, we may not know, that we will need to send someone to go diving in to dig through to find it and to properly recognize that. And so that takes a lot of legwork, a lot of intensive kind of communication with people that are aware of it. And again, it just keeps going, so I apologize. That's just real brief, kind of a synopsis of what we've been doing. More than welcome to take any questions.
Very noble effort. Aaron.
So, Thursday, last week, we all met. It's a pretty solid meeting, but some of the main takeaways from the Civic League Executive Board is trust. They feel as though their community has been filled and told a lot of promises that haven't been kept, broken promises. And a lot of that has been because it's every time they speak to elected official when one comes around, then three or four years later, someone new comes around, and then they have to start all the way back over, then they're starting from scratch. Some of their concerns, as well, it's not just about historical preservation, which is really important to them, but C-TAC Park. They're not able to use their park or utilize their park till it's full of its potential. There aren't any parking spots there, and it's a nice-sized park, it's just, you can't use it, you can't park there. C-TAC School, not only for the residents there, but for a lot of, I guess, alumni who attend the C-TAC School, that really holds a special place for them, they'd like to see that preserved as well. Anytime leader, if they happen to vacate the building or whatever, they want to preserve that. And then, the other number-one issue they had was with the battery plant that's coming there. It's supposed to be a hub zone, they were promised, in order to get buy-in, that they would be hires from the community, not just being able to apply, but hires from the community. And now, all of a sudden, that's not, supposedly that's not going to happen. And so, because of the technicalities of the hub zone.
I would like to understand that, why that's changed.
Why that's changed, and so that again, has left.
No, they were promised.
Yeah, and that was, that was one of the reasons why they said, you know, when they came to council, they was told that, and when they spoke at council. There's still a construction, there's.
Plenty of time, but we need to.
Yeah, okay. But that's a major, a major concern for making sure the economic vitality of the community, as well, particularly when you have such developments that are going on around there with our new sports center, Places coming online not too long ago, not too long from now, as well as, you know, other developments going on within that district, and yet you have a community that's been promised certain things, and the promises haven't been kept for a long time. So, the point they wanted me to make and make sure I drive this home is that, they aren't looking for guarantees, so to speak, they understand how that works, but they want assurances, and they don't want just talk, and they want it in writing, they want a commitment schedule, which they are working with Mr. Tahan, and they want to take their time and come up with it, and they want that in writing, so if so happens, you know, someone else new comes along, they don't have to start from scratch and say, well, we were promised this, we were told this. They can have that document and say, this is the plan we all agreed to. And so I think it'd be becoming, for council, for all of us, you don't have to do it together, but one day, if you all find the time, just take a walk down there, take a visit with the residents, and I think that goes a part of the outreach as well. They didn't want to just, council or Mr. Tahan's group to come down there and set up a booth and say, tell us what you want, and they said, no, come to our church, come to our outings, come to our events, and actually listen to the people and understand what is really C-TAC, it's not just buildings, it's the people.
Great, thank you. Michael, then, Rosemary.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Tahan and his entire team for the community engagement plan at C-TAC, and I think it's very important. But if I may, I'd like to take a moment, just to speak a little bit more broadly about community engagement. And I'm encouraged to see this plan, because I think we have to be honest about the fact that in Virginia Beach and other communities throughout our country, there are neighborhoods and communities that have historically been underserved, and that's no exception here in our city. And I think one of the things that we have to do is take responsibility for that, we have to recognize that it's true, and then take proactive measures to be more thoughtful and more inclusive, so that every aspect of our city, every aspect of our community is given the same dignity and respect as the other. And I think that's something that is very important for us to keep in mind as we move forward, and I look forward to working with all of you to ensure that that's true, at C-TAC and in other communities throughout the city.
So I remember that rezoning that, you know, we had such a difficult time with in April, and brought the fact, really needed to meet with the community and work on this. I'm so glad to see that you've done such a thorough job, and hopefully we can build that trust that Aaron says is not there, because, and I can understand why it's not, so I think this is a really good first step to doing that. And also, I know Historic Preservation gave a grant to those two lovely ladies to work on the history of C-TAC, so I don't, Mark, do you know where they are in that at all?
They've given a couple of grants for African-American communities, but I do just have an application cycle that's coming to fruition here on Thursday, we're accepting applications through five o'clock on Thursday, the 15th, and one of them is application for the study of C-TAC.
Wonderful, wonderful. So, it's great when we have these different groups of our city working together. They get a better place.
And lastly, they say, listen, no one, if you don't hear it from Ms. Tammy Rice, the president of the C-TAC Civic League, it's not true, no one speaks for them. So, if they say they're from C-TAC and they're speaking for the group, she said, their word doesn't hold weight unless you speak to her directly, so, just putting that out there.
All right, anybody else? Bobby, thank you very much, very important project.
Okay, thank you, Bobby, appreciate it. Next, we have our Director of Communications, Julie Hill, and she's going to provide you a briefing on our permanent memorial and our Building Two survey results. And you receive charts, but without her context of what we received in feedback, I don't think you really get the value of the survey, and I appreciate you doing this, Julie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Happy to walk through the results. You got the entire packet two weeks ago in your Friday package, and that not only included the top-line survey results, but the complete list of all the comments and question, the questions material that we have. So, I'm not going to go over all of that, but I did want to provide you a little bit of the context for the survey. If you talk about community engagement, this tool has proven for us, over the year and a half that we've had it, to be one of the opportunities that allows people to participate from wherever they are, at whatever time, and they don't need a computer, they can do it on their phone. And so this is one of those examples. It did get released to city employees in advance, but overall, what you see is that we had it active just about five weeks after our tragedy here, and we had over 2,600 participants and 1,246 comments that were provided during that period. And a breakdown of who participated, a little over half, about 57%, were city employees, and then the rest were split between residents here, former city employees, and there is a remarkable 4% that seemed to be scattered in Europe and other parts of the West Coast. So, most of the people here actually did not work inside the municipal center, they worked outside the municipal center. For the people who were city employees, only 27% said that they worked in the municipal center, but did not work in Building Two. And then finally, just 12% of the people who actually completed the survey were Building Two participants, and that's helpful. There were really two purposes that council and the manager had asked us to explore, and one of them was this idea of what a memorial, whether it's temporary or permanent, what it should convey, and then the second part of it looked at reuse or options for Building Two. And so, probably not surprising to you, that as we gave a whole list of possible adjectives and ideas for how, what kinds of feelings we would want a memorial to capture or convey, that the top ones were strength and love, hope, and comfort. We took some of the advice that we received from other cities, about two weeks after our tragedy here, we got together with probably, I don't know, six or eight of the other cities that have had similar tragedies and have gone through memorial planning processes, you heard a little bit about that from Emily, and so this was some of the borrowed process that we took from them. And then, we wanted to ask people to what extent it was important for the memorial to have one element over the other, and overwhelmingly, people either absolutely essential or very important indicated that natural elements and having very specific information about each victim, as well as a place to sit, emerged as the top three ideas for what a permanent memorial would have in place. But it really was a little bit more than that, it was quiet reflection as opposed to inspiration or contemplation, and it was a celebration of life, and then to a slightly lesser extent, a place where people could pray and be uplifted. You know that we went through a process with Ann Miller, with Historic Homes, to archive the temporary memorial items, and those are being offered, they've completed that, and flash drives that they created with all of the images are actually going to be provided to the families. So should they choose to keep some of the items that were provided at the temporary memorial, they will be able to do that, and if not, they will be assured that they will be taken care of in a perpetual way. So we did want, though, to ask people, in the light of having the temporary memorial taken down, whether or not that we should keep that, and it was either kind of a combination of yes, but that wasn't an overwhelming majority, most people said either, I don't know, I'm not sure, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, or no. So, it is a little bit split, that becomes much clearer, though, when we break it down and we look at the participants who selected yes, versus the ones who selected no. We were curious about who might want to maintain a temporary memorial while we contemplate what a permanent memorial would be. And I did the calculations a couple of different times, because the data is remarkably similar on each case. It is right, just about 56% of city employees on either end of whether they said yes or no, and then everybody else was spread across the other choices. The only difference in the numbers really is whether it's a resident of Virginia Beach and slightly more said no than said yes. So that was really the only difference with that. So we looked at what the options were for identifying a location for a temporary memorial, and you'll see on the next page, we looked at, well, would you be willing to support a temporary memorial site that moved it here? We looked all around the campus, one of the things that we got from a lot of employees is a difficulty of going by the memorial every day, and having to look out a window and seeing it every day. And that that has been an overwhelming feeling, especially in these early weeks and months. We had this about five weeks after the May 31st, we are now just two and a half months past it, so it is still very fresh for a lot of people. This is a site that offers a lot of the elements that people had indicated they wanted to see in a permanent memorial, that it was a place for quiet reflection, it was a place that had natural elements, was a place that could be out of the way, where people could still go, but they wouldn't have to be reminded of it at all, and about two-thirds of people would support this location. And that is, on the opposite side of Building 30, you have Building 30 on one side, there's a parking lot that is across from the courts, and it's kind of tucked back next to the stormwater, yep, BMP. The memorial was one part, what to do with Building Two, and the future of Building Two is the second. And the people who have talked about this have focused a lot of attention on the 39% who had indicated that they wanted to tear it down. This was one of the questions on the survey that allowed people to indicate. This was one of the questions on the survey that allowed people to indicate as many of the options as they would support. And so what you see here is that 39% support tearing it down. You're going to see a little bit more in the comments. And that was where a lot of the emotion in the comments came out. But that 61% wanted some form of reuse as indicated by the other options. So you had 39% with tear it down, but there was a split over a various amount of or types of reuses, whether it was a police headquarters, First Precinct, to renovate it and put other city departments in there, or to make it a new City Hall. So those were all split. That was the least desirable of the locations was to make it the new City Hall. But the other ones received pretty strong support there. And pretty well split with whether or not the building should be renamed. Will it always be Building Two in people's minds? Or would we look at it in a different way? So pretty well split between yes and then either no or I'm not sure. But if they did want to rename the building, then we gave them some options that we...
You had a white box. You've got to explain last one, too. Is that the...
Did it have a white box?
Yeah, up top. What is that?
So that one's the people are not sure.
Okay.
So the not sure, I apologize. So 16% indicated they were not sure. And so, just so you don't get everything on the slide, 51% said call it something else than Building Two. The top gray box is people wanting to name it after the victims, and that's 9%. The other, the green box is the police headquarters, First Precinct, at 17%. And then some people wanted to name it after the day. Call it Building 531, for example, would be the choice. So you see, we don't have great consensus around what people are looking for. But again, we are talking about something very early on in this overall process. And we imagine, based on the experience of some other cities, that you will continue to see a little bit of movement on where people might be. And one of the best examples I can give you is the bubble. Now, don't be overly taken with the 148 for tear it down because it is a word bubble. And what it didn't distinguish between are the people who said, don't tear it down, and tear it down. And so you have this combination of the comments that are presented there. But overall, you had those three big, major bubbles, that people want it to be a memorial, whether they were tear it down or not, and whether police are the appropriate departments to occupy the building or not. So that was the split that you'll see. And this is an example of some of those comments. So people did not, you know, don't rename it, tear it down, and then make it a halfway house for youth or homeless. But then you had other comments that would suggest a different approach. If every building that had a tragedy associated with it were torn down, 20% of buildings and homes in the U.S. would have to be destroyed. I have no idea where the data comes from. These are anonymous surveys. So I don't know 20%, but that was a different perspective. And then one from an individual who was in the Pentagon on 9/11 and renovating, restoring it showed the strength and that we could do the same here. So you have, what I picked of the 1,247 comments that we garnered on the survey were a variety of them to show you where people are and the different perspectives that people have. So Building Two, after all, is where it happened. Changing its name arose by any other name. And then if we... I thought it was a really interesting idea for somebody to say, what if we just rename all the buildings in the municipal center campus? That it's really hard to find Building Six. So just for fun, do you know what Building Six is? Schools. Yep. So, but where it is and how you navigate the campus. So people thought this might be an opportunity to really reconsider how we have people orient themselves to the campus.
But it's building Two.
And then the people who wanted to talk about it as naming it after the day or individuals, 531's a nice thought, being practical. It would be best to rename it something unique and not torn down. We actually have a number in our string that is not used in the campus yet. Do you know what it is? We have no building...
13.
Three. We have no building three. So people have suggested Building Three might be it. And then if it shouldn't be... And then there are other people who said, please don't name it after the worst day of my life. So you have people really across the whole gamut. So this is our initial survey. You have the full briefing in your packet from a couple of weeks ago. But I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you have about this survey or any interest in exploring anything further.
Questions, comments? Rosemary.
I know one of the things that we talked about was the police going in there, but they're saying they don't want to go in there either.
That's true. So...
Some people are and some people are not.
Yeah. So what are options?
Well, let's...
What are some of the other options, I guess?
So, may I?
Yes.
All right. So as you know, my infrastructure team is busy looking at how we proceed and have secured architectural services with regards to floor plans for Building One, Building Two, and Building 11, since they're all in the mix now. And one of the directives that I gave them a week ago was, we can't wait for a year-plus, three months from now to show progress because we're trying to do 30% design on some major infrastructure. And it just doesn't happen overnight. So they are proceeding under guidance that, based on the following timeline. First of all, you saw my email announcing a week closure of the planning department. Starting at noon on Friday, they're going to unplug their computers. IT's rushing in. We're moving all the computers for all these scattered locations that planning is, that DSC, that inspections permits are located throughout the city. And IT's going to work diligently through the weekend and the first part of the week to reconnect comms at the new Sabre Street location. We are going to have workforce show up to planning. They're going to load all their files and everything. The sheriff's workforce team is coming in to assist in the movement. We're going to be moving out Monday and Tuesday, relocating at Sabre, standing up that operation, getting comms, getting activities, having work meetings for integration, something that we had hoped to be working on long before this incident happened with our new director and some of the new aspects of providing planning and development services to the public. And we're going to reopen on Monday, the 26th? That's what I said. To a whole new environment located there to support that activity. Same time this Friday, we're opening the RFPs for the 50,000 square feet, either in one or in two increments of 25 for public utilities, public works somewhere in the city to figure out where we're going to pull them and push them for the four to five years it's going to take to locate them into workspace that is conducive to delivering services that they deliver. We believe that that will occur, that build-out associated with that will be completed. And in January, they'll be moving into that location. And I've asked that. We are vacating, that we have moved out all the files, all the documents. We have looked at all the legacy paperwork, and we filed it, we've digitized it, or we've destroyed it according to the records management. And that the building is no longer serving as that function. And we are going to move forward with a contract for the demolition of the inside of those floors so that we'll preserve the ceiling and the lighting, the HVAC, and the fire prevention necessary to keep the fire system active in the building. But that way, by about the middle of April, we've completed all that so that we can take a look at that building from a different set of eyes, a different perspective. There are people that would be affected forever. But that, the shell of that building and the electrical system that can be preserved and the HVAC portion that can be preserved, it well exceeds $20 million. And we need to be very cognizant of the public's purse to afford this. We think that we can emotionally and psychologically restore confidence in that facility by doing this process. I fully support the police, the precinct, that First Precinct that is in there. This will serve them. We have several police activities going in other places across the city that will be able to be consolidated. I believe the opportunity to move our data center out of the basement in a flood zone and move it up mid-floor, in second floor, and be able to build that conduit, it all comes in the building. And then we'll be able to go upstairs and put that in there is the right approach to do that. We will work diligently to overcome some of the concerns that some folks have. But I think that by cleansing that building, by having the emotional interaction with clearing those spaces, we're going to be able to move forward. And time will help us to adjust to that. So we are breaking ground next Monday for the new City Hall. The back parking lots will be closed. We'll be working on the BMP on this side, behind Building One. And we will be commencing the parking area where the old temporary area where we call Building Three used to be, on the north side of Building Two. And all the connection between that parking lot and the new BMP goes on the backside of this building and Building Two. And so that parking area is going to come off limits as we begin the City Hall process.
Is there a ceremony for that?
Uh...
Groundbreaking? No.
No. We, Rosemary...
I just...
We think we move forward. You've known me a long time. It's about getting the jobs done and so...
That was just the first I'd heard it was going to be groundbreaking.
Well, we're making this announcement on the parking lot and the BMP. The actual footers for the building are forthcoming, and we can have that conversation if that's the desire of the council. We can do that. But I think getting on with what we got to do is pretty essential.
Okay, Jess?
Some question for Julie. You indicated that you think that the result of this is going to change. Is the plan to try to shoot this back out again to how people feel? Is there a timeline yet?
So we've gotten, from the cities that we've consulted with on similar processes, they started fairly early. Nobody did surveying quite as early as that we did. So they feel like we probably got a little bit more of the raw emotion to it. So they did it closer to a year and thought that maybe we might want to revisit it. And because the memorial planning process does take a while, the cities are, some of them are three years, five years. It really depends on fundraising and some of the other elements to make sure that a final design comes together, that that would still work for us. So that may be what you would want to do, is something in that one-year mark or ahead of it. You also don't want to hit the anniversary. So that, yeah. Or March. Yep.
I just want to thank you for everything.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sabrina, my apologies.
That's okay. I just had, just an observation. I do appreciate the survey and how the numbers were broken down because what I've noticed, especially where you show where people might have said yes or no to something, and you, when you delve into the statistics a little more, you find out some didn't even work in the building, some didn't even work for the city of Virginia Beach. And I think that it's important to really focus on those who were in the building, those who are employees. Because you can ask someone who has no connection with what happened, and they can give you these really profound suggestions and what they think. And that's good. But I think you really, we really have to listen to the heart of the people who were affected. I think that's where we'll get a clear, we'll get a truth, and we'll get clear direction of what we need to do. And so just, you know, wanting to just really focus on hearing them and what they want. And that's what I've been hearing when I've been talking to them. So thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, Sabrina. Michael?
On the topic of Building Two and the survey results, many people indicate their preference, in the survey anyway, indicates their preference for tearing it down. And Mr. Hanson makes, I think, a compelling case for the value of the building itself. And we've heard some discussion about, certainly heard a proposal about potentially using that for a new police headquarters. And I've heard a lot of discussion about the interior of the building. For example, how the interior could be fully renovated, and that may help mitigate some of the emotional impacts. And I just want to state, and this may be a premature time, but I think it's important that I just state that we should also consider the exterior of the building. I think aesthetics matter. And there are a number of, I think, innovative and creative techniques that could be applied that would dramatically change the look of the building, not only on the interior but on the exterior. And I think that may impact how the community and how people who work in the building and around the building and residents of Virginia Beach feel about the use of that space. I think we really do need to pay some attention to the exterior of the structure.
Good job.
Since the building, you said it's basically going to be cleared out. I, because I've done this on a building that I was building, but digitize the inside. If you digitize the whole thing, then when you do your drawings or talk to people, you can do really good visualization tools are out there today to, so people can see and you can look. And that's always very educational because a lot of people can go in, they can look at an empty box, or they can look at engineering drawings. It's kind of, you know, it doesn't get you anywhere. But today, you can actually have the avatar that walks through the building, and you see it just like the person who's walking sees it. And that visualization software today is very inexpensive. And it's usually probably standard, I think architects today are using that anyway.
We have it on the Sports Center. So you might remember that we shared with you.
But you have to digitize the inside first. But if it's all empty, that's pretty easy to do.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? You know, if I could just say, you know, we as a city are at the beginning of a very long journey going forward. And what we're talking about here is part of the healing process that we're going to have to go through. And it's going to be part of a national conversation. You know, once again, it's offset now that we're a member of a fraternity. And unfortunately, since our tragic event, a number of other cities have joined that fraternity. Tomorrow, I'm going to be in Dayton at a conference with other mayors. On Friday, they're going to, vice mayor's joining me in a conference with the Conference of Mayors, you know, to talk about this. You know, this is a national problem, and we're very much a part of it and very much on the forefront of what's, you know, going on. But once again, you know, these are the conversations that we have to have right now. And, you know, they're tough. They're not easy on us as a council. They're not easy on us as a community. But they're necessary right now going forward as we go forward with the healing. We're going to have some bumps out there, but, you know, we're going to be VB strong. Okay. Thank you. Yep, Barbara?
Just in thinking about all of this, you know, we had just completed the budget mid-May. And we thought we had a big year looking ahead of us with the stormwater and all of those kinds of things. We had absolutely no thought anywhere that we would be talking about doing all of this work with buildings, you know, other than City Hall and so forth. And the fact that all of this has been added to the activity and workload of the city's staff and having to deal with this, with these departments having to be moved around and still keeping the city running, I think is absolutely phenomenal. And for, you know, not only the horror of the issue, but the extent of all of this and what it's going to mean for the next several years before we get everybody back is just unreal. And to say nothing of this cost that we certainly didn't anticipate at the time of the budget, it really has made a tremendous difference in our year and in our looking at things. And I... And I just think that everybody has just worked so well together. I think we can just be proud of the staff. And I think it sounds like it's really coming together. I know there's still decisions to be made and things that we're going to have to deal with, but I think to get this far, two and a half months down the line, is phenomenal. And to have planning ready to move into a much better space in another week and the other departments, because I know they've had it tough in trying to get the job done, but they've done it and it's a real testament to all of those folks.
Well said, Ms. Henley.
Mayor, let me just add one more thing. You mentioned Dayton. Mayor, we are so grateful to the cities that have been advising us as they were further along this path than we are. And in Dayton, Mayor Dyer was invited to participate in a conversation that actually will end up being on CBS News at some point. They'll be taping a conversation with mayors of cities that talk about that healing. So we hope to, in that way, be paying it forward to some of our more recent cities that have experienced something tragic. I just got an email from the city of Gilroy, who are just looking up two weeks after their festival shooting and looking for the same kind of assistance from the other cities that we're offering. So if there's a good that can come out of it, it is that ability for us to work with those other cities and see what can be done to try to prevent something like this from happening again.
Yeah, and in conversation with a number of the other mayors, Orlando, Parkland, and a few other folks, you know, we're trying to, you know, get a working group together for the upcoming mayor's conference in DC in January, that, you know, it's going to be, you know, so the conversation's going to be going on. And as long as we keep the conversations going on at this table and, you know, with our community and, you know, move forward, you know. But I think Ms. Henley really articulated it well and, you know, in spite of everything, we got a lot to be proud of. Thank you. Okay.
Well, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you in the city council briefing. As you requested, this be placed on your discussion agenda for today, law enforcement retirement.
Okay, you know, I asked for this to be put on. You know, we started a conversation last week, and once again, I think this is a very complex, you know, situation. I will state upfront that Chief Severa and I have been friends ever since he was Sergeant Severa back in 1990. And I just want to state upfront that my suggestion, I have a personal concern over age discrimination, you know, that's been pretty longstanding for a while. And I was hoping for at least maybe a discussion or at least to keep it going, you know, it may be a compromise. You know, we were talking about going to 70 and back and forth to 60, you know, even perhaps a consideration of going to 67, which would allow, you know, certain retirees to, you know, get to social security or, you know, something in the line of a compromise because, once again, this is not a coherent way of doing things, that's throughout the country. So, but once again, I just thought about, you know, things that we could do. This is an important thing going forward. You know, I can tell you that as a home care physical therapist over decades, I see a lot of folks that are being compelled to retirement that aren't ready for it financially or otherwise. But once again, I think it's a complicated thing, but once again, I think, you know, worthy of discussion. So, you know, I would open up for any discussion. John?
I just want to say, I think that we have insufficient analytical information, data to even have a constructive discussion. I mean, I have lots of opinions, but they're not informed. And I don't want to bring my military experience bias to the table. I don't think that's probably the right answer. But I don't feel like I have an understanding of the data set and the implications, the choices to have a meaningful discussion. That's just my own observation.
I think it's a good point. Barbara?
Well, you know, it was really a surprise to see the item on the agenda that was on the agenda. I didn't have any idea we were even going to be considering it. So, you know, it was kind of an unexpected thrust into this question. But sort of like the mayor, I just have this feeling that a mandatory retirement is not something that is a pretty good thing in this day and time. It's, you know, we talk too much about, I guess if we were hiring somebody, we almost can't ask them how old they are. So I just don't like the mandatory retirement for any of the positions, much less, you know, singling out one department's over another. And I would just say, the unfortunate thing is that this has become a personal thing with one position. And I absolutely do not see it in that fashion at all. And I think it needs to be kept a very broad question. But just from the standpoint of the police department, given the fact that we have a lot of vacancies that we're not able to fill and we have difficulty recruiting, and now with this much broader concern that we have for security, particularly in our own buildings, I think we're going to be required to have even more positions than we have now. So I do think it's, there are a lot of issues that we need to look at. But I see it as a very broad question for this department. I notice you use it as law enforcement, which I think is what it is. And so I hope we can keep it as a broad question and not a one position at all. But I really have the questions and the concerns about this inability to fill all these positions that we have and the length of time it takes once you start a school to get those new recruits out there and able to work. It just doesn't seem to me to make sense to require people to retire who maybe would like to continue to work for a while. So that's the way I'm looking at it.
Mr. Wood?
Thanks. And I agree with much of what Barbara said with respect to it not being about an individual person. I think that's important. And I think this work by the staff here is really good. I guess Mr. Cover put it together, indicating the various ages and things like that. I received via email yesterday, and this is the actual document, if you guys want, it's 150 pages, from the PBA. They did an internal survey. And I printed out what their survey was, but essentially it was 92% saying they do not want, out of 150 employees, 92% said they did not want to change the age. Interestingly enough, they had everybody self-identify. So the questions, because the two-question survey, please indicate your age range, and they had them by tenure blanks. And then the second was, do you think council should change the current city code and raise the mandatory retirement age of first responders to 70? That's what the question was. And they had three folks who replied to it that indicated they were over 60, and their response, two of them said no, one said yes. So, you know, that's what the employees said. And I also just kind of gathered up the other emails we got from employees. I don't know if everybody has received all these, I didn't really pay attention to see if they went to city council or to J.L., whatever. So I just put all those in there because I think it's important to take a look at that. The one thing I noticed is this doesn't really direct it towards any one individual. It talks about the overall part of it. So I just wanted everybody to have that to take a look at. And if you want to look at the 150...
I would.
I knew you would, John, so there you go. Print it out for you, buddy.
I do, too. And you said this was first responders. I was only looking at it as being this one.
I'll have it in your packet or, Ms. Henley, I'll make you a copy.
Yeah, there you go.
I would look at it as being, I don't know why we have to, not why we can't do one department. I mean, that's the one that I see the big need because the others maybe aren't having trouble recruiting. I just see this as a...
Rosemary?
Well, maybe that's another question, other needs. And I agree with John that I don't think we have enough information. I sent a question to Mr. Cover and asked about the Line of Duty Act. We don't know how this is going to affect our bottom line on the Line of Duty Act. And the Line of Duty Act was passed by the General Assembly to help, you know, officers, first responders that were hurt in the line of duty or killed to provide for their families and health insurance and a salary and college and all of that. And the General Assembly passed it and they said, look what we did. And then when they started realizing how expensive it was going to be, they, guess what? They passed it to us. And they got all the credit for doing it and then we got the bill. So there's a, once you hit that 65, it's kind of like the information that we got in our package. There's a lot can happen once you become 65 to 70. So I would really like to know if there's something with that Line of Duty Act that's going to affect our bottom line as well. Does anybody know how much we pay in the Line of Duty Act now?
Got a brief on that from about a year ago, I think it was, Dave.
It's pretty expensive.
From the Risk Management Group gave the brief and talked about it, if I remember right.
Yeah. Okay, Jim?
Well, not so much line of duty, but that was one of the things that really surprised me was this document here. And I don't know where this came from, Dave, but it says occupational injury and illness incident rate by police departments. And it's got everybody from Miami to Minneapolis and Albuquerque, and we're at the top. Why is that? That's concerning to me regardless of anything else that we have this now. Coincidentally, I was at LEDA last night for an EMS graduation and actually Councilmember Bellucci was with me. And we ran into the commander of the training, Captain Squires, and he was talking about how they're really focusing on reducing injuries in training because it had been up so high and that was one of his main goals because they lose people to injuries in the academy. And, but I'm just curious because this seems like an incredibly high number. And, you know, we want to be at the top, but this is not the list we want to be at the top of.
Well, you may recall, I think it was Patty, and a number of times has given us briefs in the past, and I think Risk Management was a partner and has brought out, and there actually was a report we got, I think it was maybe two years ago, I can't remember, I remember reading it, and showing about just what our experience rate was for those types of costs relative to the state. And we definitely are an overachiever.
And if I can...
And there may be good reasons the report didn't talk to causation, but it gave some inferences, I think that's fair to say. But that is worthy of looking at, independent of what we do.
Okay, Jim?
Well, what I wanted to finish is saying is, you know, we get the great report that talks about the lack of physical interaction with people and, you know, how the physical interactions are down. But I'm just, I'm struggling with why, if there are fewer physical interactions, why injuries are up? And that's something that I think, I'd like to get some more information on because I think that injuries and all this is, I think, pretty critical to all of this. And I kind of like to see it across all the public safety departments to see what this number is, not just police.
Right. Okay, anybody else at this point? Sabrina?
Some of the feedback that I would have been getting relates to promotion. I think with looking at increasing that age to 70, people are concerned about people not moving up in the ranks. And so I'd like to see how, you know, in that survey, how that's going to impact, you know, those, you know, officers or the police officers. Is that really going to be an impact?
Right. And I think addressing that concern, and I heard it too, and that's why I'm suggesting a compromise at 67. But once again, it gets them to the threshold of going into social security on retirement and everything and, you know, and some of the other concerns. But I think Ms. Henley accurately, you know, we're short of police, but this is not only in Virginia Beach. This is a national phenomenon. There were every major, and, you know, and, you know, public safety, you know, is that concern. And, you know, to me, it really comes down to equity and fairness. And to find out, and I think John Moss was 100% accurate in saying that we need more metrics on it because, I understand Boston, you know, raised their rage recently since we spoke last time. Okay, so once again, we're, you know, what's out there? So I think we have to take a serious look at, you know, what other similar localities are doing and everything. You know, I understand the police chief, I may be meeting tomorrow, 66, you know, and, but once again, you know, what was the consistency? What's the theme? What is the best practice? So if I can make a recommend, if we could do a, you know, data input, I understand we have a couple of other folks that might be facing mandatory retirement in December. You know, in fairness to them, if we can get a look at things, so we can have, you know, a meaningful discussion among ourselves to figure out where we can go. Michael and then Mr. Hanson.
Mayor, if, I agree with those who have said that we should take the time to get more information, and I'm certainly in agreement with that. And one question that has been raised to me that I'm curious about is that I understand the minimum age eligibility for retirement is 50. And then the maximum in this case would be 65. So I think there are some public safety professionals who have some concern, I think rightfully so in my mind, that increasing the age from 65 to 70 may impact the minimum age for eligibility. And that's, I think, a valid concern. And anyway, it's one question that I would like to have addressed in that discussion, if we may.
Right, Ms. Henley?
That one was one of mine as well, is would that be necessary or could we simply just deal with the upper and not bother the lower? I think it's important. But I did notice in that listing that we had that there were quite a few cities in Virginia that have 70 as the mandatory retirement age or either no retirement age. It seemed to be more prevalent than the 65. So I think we can, we can look at our own cities to see what their experience is and how they do handle these other questions, such as the one that Rosemary had and yours. So if, since we have several large Virginia cities that already do this, you know, we have something that we can really look at. But I was going back to this question of the vacancies that we have. That's what I would really like some more information on, you know, how many vacant positions do we have? You know, how, it seemed that even with a new school, we were still going to have a lot of vacancies. And does this, what an impact do all of these injuries have on vacancies? Not only is the job vacant, but there's not anybody to work if somebody's added on an injury. So I would really like to have some overview of just what the status of the department is in being able to cover what we need to have covered. Do we have problems? Because I think we see this from time to time, that, you know, our police maybe have difficulties because they're overworked, because they don't have as many positions filled as we should need to have filled. So I think there are a lot of questions that we have and more information that we do need to get in order to really look at it from a very broad question.
Mr. Hanson and then John.
We took a look at the numbers of those entering retirement age. In the police department, we have three, if I'm correct. We have one that's 64 approaching 65, and we have two that are 63. In the fire department, we have one that's 64 approaching 65. Correct? So, just so we know, the numbers are not significant at this point. We track injuries hard and accidents hard. And we, our police department leads the pack. Our Public Works Department is second, our fire department is third in our annual analysis. Our Risk Management Office has been significantly impacted, as you might imagine, by this incident. And we would have provided you the annual roll-up on the fiscal year by now. I owe you that briefing and that analysis. I will provide you that information. Injuries are, you know, they come with the job and public safety, it's a paramilitary organization. All those folks are out there, they're protecting the public, they're expected to respond to calls for service and protecting the public. And we do our best to train them. And one of the things that I've challenged Deputy City Manager Cover to do is look at the fiscal training standards that are required. I'm somewhat disillusioned as a former military guy as to the standards that are required for our police department as compared to the standards that are mandated for our fire department. And so head along into that conversation with Steve and we've got a look at that. and, and we've, we've got, we've got to look at that because it's starting to show up. I will provide you the costs associated with a workman's comp. And, and as you, as you all have alluded to, our occupational injury rates and incident reports and costs associated with that. So, as we continue to fact-find on this matter, I will, I will set that up in, in one or two weeks, whatever it takes me to pull that data for you to, to have more information as you go about determining what you want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Moss, and then Rosemary?
I know a number of us talked about, we've wanted to make it a larger policy. But I can't tell you how many times, if I counted, we, people were talking about specific people, what their ages were, where they're at. I can tell you from experience, that is a bad road to walk down. I think you really have to look at your work structure. You need to understand the demographics of that. You need to understand the flow points for people for advancement. You have to know what flow points cause people that you'd like to retain that leave with the experience you want to retain. This is a, a very intricate, not complicated. This is like a watch. You know, you think you move the, 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 our hand just one step, and you do this little change, but that little minute hand's going [makes sound of a machine running], and next thing you know, the spring doesn't work. So, I think this is, needs a, not only a lot of data, a lot of deliberation. And you have to walk through the different scenarios and the understanding of these kind of issues is, this is a lot of homework. And there's, there's actuarial pieces, there's flow point of people, there's people who are in the workforce, which you need to think, give a lot of consideration to what they think, because those are the people you say you're trying to influence. But the last thing you can really do is make a policy trying to solve an individual po, a policy situation, which may be compassionate, but in the long run is very dysfunctional. And all these people came to work under a set of conditions which they knew when they took the job. So, it's not like we're breaching faith. It's a question is, is there a compelling business case, a compelling case based on science to make a change, independent, if nobody was near sixty-seven or nobody was near fifty-two? It's, does it make the best sense for an effective police department or effective city? And that really should be the driver. And I, that's why I said, I'm not bringing my bias from my military thing to bear because it may be, it's not the same. It's not an up-and-out system. But I do know there are consequences if you make the wrong mistake and you can't get the check valve back open. It's closed. You're just moving forward with a cost structure you may not want with unintended consequences. We need to be very deliberate.
Okay. Mrs. Henley?
I think Rosemary, Rosemary was before me.
So, right now, there's only a few people near that sixty-five. But that could change if we move the goal line so that in the future, those numbers could be much more significant. So, I guess the other question I have is, this is a very physical job. This is not like sitting around the table talking like we're doing today. I mean, it's, you know, you never know if you're going to be at the 7-Eleven, and all of a sudden, something's happened, and you're going to have to jump in if you're a police officer and interact to solve whatever problem could be there. You don't have to chase a suspect. Because just because you've been working at a desk doesn't mean that you're not a police officer anymore. So, I guess my question, too, is being physically fit, how does that, you know, we, and I don't know the answer to this question. Sometimes it's probably not a good thing to do, but, you know, how are we checking now on physical fitness? And would that be something going forward if we changed that goal line?
Just one other piece of information I'd like to have. It hasn't been that long ago that we raised the sheriffs to seventy. Could we have the data that we used to make that decision? And perhaps a transcript of our discussions and, and what went into our making that decision? I don't remember that we had a whole lot of data. But I think we do need to review that and see what led us to do that and what prompted our, our approval of that.
Well, Reese, you did that in twenty fifteen. So, some of us weren't in leadership overseeing that area. So, we'll look at it.
Yes, Sabrina?
Um, you know, I would be remiss if I did not mention, just in my time volunteering as a chaplain on a police force. I mean, I've, I've seen and served along many, you know, gray-haired officers who are very capable and who do their job well. So, I have seen evidence, you know, that they're very worthy of doing what they are, you know, hired to do. And, and so, I just, you know, would say, we should really consider that because, you know, just because you're of a certain age, it doesn't, I mean, every, you know, seventy-year-old may not want to do it. But if there are some who are capable and who are able to do it, it certainly should be some type of consideration.
Right. Yeah, Jim?
So, going back to one of Barbara's questions, doing a little research, and this is kind of interesting because I have no idea why this was done. From sixty-five to eighty-three, it was sixty-five. Sixty-five to nineteen eighty-three, retirement age was sixty-five.
Oh, okay. I was, didn't know what you were talking about.
No, city, city. From eighty-three to eighty-seven, it was seventy. And from eighty-seven to now, it's sixty-five again.
All public safety?
Public safety, right. So, it indicates--
Well, we've got experience, so.
It, it said, or moved, city, included firefighters, law enforcement, and that was effective in seven-one-eighty-seven. Eighty-three, they changed it to seventy. And then in eighty-three, it changed from police officer firefighters to public safety employees. Then it says in sixty-five, it, in nineteen sixty-five, it said, police officers, firefighters, end of the month, they turn sixty-five, and no other, anybody beyond age seventy. So, it was kind of an interesting, I don't know why that was, and, but it's, it's kind of interesting that it started off for about thirty years as, or twenty years as sixty-five, then for four years was seventy, and then was sixty-five again.
I'm sure we've got good records that'll tell us.
Yeah. All right.
I, I will, I, I don't know the answers to those questions, but those dates sort of correlate to changes that occurred. Well, under the, the Age Discrimination in Employment Act, there were, there was a landmark case decided by the Supreme Court in nineteen eighty-three. And then there was an amendment to, by the Congress to it in nineteen eighty-six. So, and when you look at what those changes were, I think that they will correlate probably to what those numbers were. For example, between nineteen eighty-three and eighty-six, there was no carve-out for law enforcement. You could only have a, you could only have a retirement age if you could prove that it was a bona fide occupational qualification. So, it would make sense that you would make the age older so that you could more readily, if challenged, try to prove that. And then in nineteen eighty-six, the law was changed to say that if you had a policy that was in effect in nineteen eighty-three, that policy was lawful again. So, that may have been why it got moved back. I don't know. I, I, I'm just telling you that corresponds with the changes to the law.
Sounds like--
I just found it interesting that it was one and then another, then after another.
Oh, yeah. And then, you know, I think a number of localities over the years have, you know, constantly moved, you know, a lot are, you know, some are at seventy, others at sixty-five, some maybe even less. And, and, you know, I appreciate this discussion. I just thought we should have to have it. And if I could just, you know, close with one thought.
Mayor, Mayor--
Yes?
I know you're going to close. I don't mean to interrupt you.
Okay.
But before I go kill a forest, this chart, I personally went through this document that the Vice Mayor provided to you in anticipation that this would come up. You have two questions. One is, what age group do you belong to? That's all this document say. There's a hundred and fifty pages of that. What age group are you? It says the age group, it's represented by this. I correlated to validate the data. And the second question is, do you think council should change the current, probably help, the current city code and raise the mandatory retirement age to first responders to the age of seventy years of age? Yes or no? And that is in your packet associated with that. There are no names. There are no comments. Do you want me to kill trees?
I like less is more.
Okay.
Because it's two pages.
Okay. You have that before you. I'm relieved of my responsibility to produce it.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay, not, not--
I wonder if that's back to Jim, though.
Okay, Louis has a comment.
Thank you, sir.
Dave, when, when you're putting together your information that you're going to bring to us--
Dave?
I'm sorry, Lou. I was getting hand signals from the Vice Mayor. Yes, sir?
We'll be, we'll keep it among ourselves.
When you're putting together the information, could you give us a correlation of age versus those number of people, how many days that people are out sick and from injuries and so forth? Because I think that would have a lot of bearing on--
If that data is there, which I think it is, I'll produce it.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But, you know, if I could just say that, you know, we look forward to data. And please include the sheriff and get input. And then from also, you know, the representative police groups and everything, you know, so we can have that as part of our data set, you know, as we go forward. So, we have an inclusive thing.
Okay.
And let me just say this. Once again, my thought here, you know, just being me, my focus group of one, is about fairness. And I understand the angst about going to seventy. So, hence, I was thinking about sixty-seven, you know, as a compromise that would take it, once again, take us to Social Secur, uh, Social Security eligibility and then also Medicare eligibility to help, you know, with some other costs there.
That's sixty-five.
Pardon?
Medicare's sixty-five.
Okay, but still, but, you know, a lot of folks, you know, you know, if they can transition, they can get into that. But I'm just saying, in terms of Social Security and, you know, do it a little bit better. But the other thing is, let me say this, is, you know, once again, you know, being a healthcare professional for, oh, decades now, lifespan has changed over the last couple decades. What's sixty-five today is not what was sixty-five in nineteen sixty-five, when the people who made that rule were born in nineteen hundred. Okay? Life is better. People are living longer. They are more robust going forward. But, once again, all I'm appealing to is just suggesting a compromise, only of a couple of years, you know, not taking it to seventy. And if we can have the meaningful discussions with all of, you know, the folks involved, you know, I think we can come up with a decision. Okay? Anybody else? Thank you all for your conversation. Appreciate it.